Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, December 2nd, 2014, pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Law, Chapter 231. Notice of this meeting was published in the December 12th, 2013 issues of the Nutley Sun, The Star Ledger, and the Herald News. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans is absent, excused this evening. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Mayor Petracca?
Here.
All present mayor, except for Commissioner Evans, absent, excused.
Thank you. Before we move on to our business portion of the meeting, I would just like to ask for a moment of silence. This week, we had a gentleman, Mr. Jim Paulson, who passed away, who represented our Nutley Rescue Squad for many, many years, and saddened me to bring to the town this news. Tonight was actually the wake. I can't say enough about the Paulson family. They really served this community well. So please, let's have a moment of silence. Okay, Madam Clerk, we'll move on to minutes.
Yes, Mayor. We have meeting minutes this evening for November 6th, 2014. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye. Okay, communications and correspondence? I say we have none. I do have a proclamation tonight that I would like to read. It's for my dear friend at Clara Mass Hospital, Mrs. Mary Ann Klein, I should say, Dr. Mary Ann Klein. Would you like to come to the podium when I read this, please? Before I read the resolution, I'd just like to state for the record, I can't tell you the amount of countless times I've text Mary Ellen, I have called her regarding Nutley residents that were on their way to Clara Mass or needed her aid, and I have to say that you've been such a great friend to me, to the township, to the residents, because I don't care what time of day or night it is, you always take my calls and respond to me. And the VIP treatment that our Nutley residents get at Clara Mass Hospital because of you is second to none, and I really, really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Whereas Mary Ann Klein and her husband Jerry Klein reside in the township of Hillsboro, and whereas Mary Ellen and her husband have two sons, Patrick and Jeffrey, and daughter Morgan, and whereas Mary Ellen's career in the medical field began with her nursing degree from Muhlenberg School of Nursing, and whereas Mary Ellen chose to further education and attain a bachelor's, master's, and doctorate degree from Seton Hall University, where she also served as a clinical and adjunct professor, and whereas Mary Ellen, who currently holds the title of Chief Executive Officer at Clara Mass Hospital, also held numerous supervisory and director positions at the General Hospital at Passaic, the Hospital Center at Orange, and Overlook Hospital. And whereas Mary Ellen has been recognized and has received many awards for her leadership, including most recently being honored by the John V. Kelly Memorial Foundation, North Community Health Centers Distinguished Service Award, and as Irish Woman of the Year by the county and state officials. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Mary Ann Klein, a true friend to the Township of Nutley, be recognized and honored for her significant contributions to the well-being and care for others under the leadership at Clara Mass Hospital. We don't need a vote, but if any of the other commissioners would like to comment?
Mary Ellen, I was happy to be at the Kelly Association meeting, I'm sorry, event, where you were honored, and I just want you to know that it's an honor being part of this proclamation, all right, honoring you, because you are, in fact, a treasure.
Thank you.
What you've done at Clara Mass and the improvements that you've made there, and just the quality improvements that we've seen in the short period of time that you've been in charge, is definitely a testament to your intelligence and everything that you stand for. So I want to congratulate you, and I also like to congratulate your board at Clara Mass, or I guess St. Barnabas Health Systems, for being smart enough to appoint you. Congratulations, very well deserved.
Commissioners?
Our health department has always been in touch with you, and the service that you render is outstanding. But what is really important, and I think is really neat, is that in a day and age when, you know, you don't see women doing much because of the way the system is, you have forged a way in the medical field and in the corporate industry. So you're a great role model, and I thank you for what you've done for us.
Mary Ellen, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, congratulations, and you're doing a great job.
Would you like to say a few words?
I want to thank you and the council for all the support that you've provided to Clara Mass Medical Center. We are improving services each and every day. I'm here for your residents in any way that I can be. My phone number is available if anybody ever needs me. I give out my business cards to the patients, their family members. It always has my cellphone number on it, so anybody can call me at any time, and I'm here to serve your community in any way that we can. We want to see the community stay well, not need the hospital, believe it or not. We want to keep you well, keep you healthy. Take good care of yourselves. We have a great, exciting, new project going on at the facility. We will be creating a brand-new building, which will house 32 brand-new ICU beds, intensive care beds, with private showers, bath, sofa bed for the families to stay over. There'll be special rooms for the families to speak privately with the physicians. The old nurses' stations of the past will be gone. The nurses will be right outside of the rooms, and it'll have the state-of-the-art equipment available to the residents should they need that higher level of care. There's a brand-new lobby that will be in place as well, and we've added a fifth level to the parking garage. And moving forward, we will also be adding four new additional OR suites to the facility for surgical services. And we've got new great advancement in equipment for lung screening programs for anybody who meets the criteria, if they've had a long-term history of smoking, with the free CAT scan that's provided, and a brand-new piece of technology called the electromagnetic bronchoscopy, which will pinpoint the smallest of nodules if your CAT scan results are positive. And we can do actual robotic surgery, which is less invasive than a regular surgery for somebody's lung, and really take care of the patients so that they can be diagnosed much sooner than they normally would have been. So we're very excited about the future of the hospital. We've been nationally recognized by U.S. News &amp; World Report as a top-50 hospital in the New York metro area. We have also been ranked by the Consumer Watchdog for Healthcare Safety, called the Leapfrog Group, where Clara Mass has been one of only 251 hospitals in the United States to get an A rating every single time those scores have come out. So we're very proud of the accomplishments. We have a wonderful medical staff. You have your own resident from Nutley, Dr. John Kelly, who is the president of our medical staff, and we are here with his leadership to guide us, and we're delighted to serve the public in any way that we can, and to be of assistance and continued support to you, as you all have been to us. And it's my pleasure to help in any way that we can. So on behalf of the board, the medical staff, and the entire healthcare team, I'm truly honored to accept your proclamation, and I'm delighted that we've been able to develop the friendship as we've come along this journey together. So thank you. Thank you, everybody. (applause)
Okay, we will move on to, we did minutes, I believe. We have an, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, bills.
Yes, Mayor. Public Affairs, $21,781,070. Revenue and Finance, $2,460,784.19. Public Safety, $14,237.06. Public Works, $25,037.09. Parks and Public Property, $627,950.39. Total Payroll is $865,337.8, for a grand total of $4,115,051.01.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye. Thank you. We have ordinance, public hearing tonight. Commissioner Scarpelli will read it for Commissioner Evans.
It's an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 2, Parking on Certain Streets, Section 14, entitled Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours, to add the location set forth in, which is River Road on the west side, no parking, from 369 feet south of Park Avenue, south for 29 feet.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on ordinance number 3299? Need a motion?
Move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye. Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
I have five resolutions. Resolution number 24, correction, 294-14, this is Authorization and Municipal Services Agreement for Solid Waste Collection and Disposal, 432 owners, One River Road, Nutley, New Jersey, AKA Arbor Hills, reimbursed for solid waste disposal services, so moved as listed.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye.
Resolution number 295-14, authorize agreement to provide services to mentally challenge individuals for New Jersey Arc, Essex County Unit Incorporated, January 2015 to December 31st, 2015, on the sum of $1,000, as listed, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye.
Resolution number 296-14, award contract for professional services without competitive bidding, Noreen P. McManus, CNM, January 1st, 2015 to December 31st, 2015, as listed, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye.
Resolution number 302-14, 2015 Agreement for Mental Health Services, Northwest Essex Community Healthcare Network Incorporated, 570 Bellevle Avenue, Bellevle, New Jersey, 07109, the amount of $10,000, as listed, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye, abstain.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye.
Resolution number 305-14, authorize transfer of appropriations in 2014 budget, total of amount $5,500, as listed, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire dental plan services on behalf of the township, and whereas such services may be acquired as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate, and whereas IMAC Insurance Management and Consulting shop rates, but none of the quotes were comparable to the benefits that the township currently has with Delta Dental, and whereas the township has negotiated with Delta Dental of New Jersey, Inc., and has retained a one-year renewal rate with a 3% increase over our current rate, and whereas the anticipated cost for this service will not exceed $335,000 per year, and whereas funds will be available from account number 5-01-526-243 and 5-01-707-243, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification subject to adoption of the 2015 municipal budget, and whereas Delta Dental of New Jersey has completed and submitted a Business Entity Disclosure Certification, which certifies that Delta Dental has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Delta Dental from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, State of New Jersey, will authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Delta Dental of New Jersey, Inc. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley ordinance 2963, Preservation of Trees, state that tree removal permits must be obtained for a cost of $50 per tree, and whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Recreation authorizes a refund for each tree permit submitted upon the planting of a new tree on said property, replacement tree size and species must be approved in advance by the Township forester, and whereas funds will be available from account C-01-904-905, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township treasurer is authorized to refund the tree permit fee collected as per the shade tree ordinance for Natal Toronto, 24 Columbia Avenue, in the amount of $50. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has the need to acquire Vision Care Network Plan Services on behalf of the township, and whereas such services may be acquired as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate, and whereas Premier Vision Care, 990 Cedar Bridge Avenue, Brick, New Jersey, submitted a proposal indicating they will provide the services for the sum of $1,904, and whereas funds will be available from account 5-01-526-245, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification subject to the adoption of the 2015 municipal budget, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley will authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Premier Vision Care. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Whereas the Department of Public Works announces there will be free two-hour metered parking from December 15th, 2014, through December 25th, 2014, and whereas the suspension of metered parking during the holiday is a Nutley tradition to promote our business district and support local merchants. Whereas the free two-hour parking will allow ample time for residents to take the opportunity to leisurely walk and shop Nutley first, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, wish you a happy and healthy holiday season. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Be resolved, in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Law, Chapter 231, 1975, the public meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, Essex County, State of New Jersey, are held the first and third Tuesday of every month. Counsel, will you take the second paragraph?
Yes, Mayor. If it should continue, please take notice that the public meetings for the year 2015 will be held on the following dates, at the Township of Nutley Municipal Building, third-floor commission chambers, 1 Kennedy Drive, at 7:00 PM for a conference session, followed by the regular meeting, which will start no sooner than 7:30 PM, at which time formal action may be taken.
Please take notice, the governing body of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, may require an executive session at any given meeting listed below. In accordance with NJSA 10:4-12, the governing body will adopt a resolution at an open meeting indication. The reasons for going into executive session, no action will be taken in executive session. Please take further notice, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley will hold an end-of-the-year meeting on Wednesday, December 31st, 2015, at 9:00 AM. Township of Nutley Municipal Building, third floor, commission chambers, 1 Kennedy Drive, formal action may be taken. Our list is January 6th, 2015, January 20th, February 3rd, February 7th, March 3rd, March 17th, April 7th, April 21st, May 5th, May 19th, June 2nd, June 16th, July 7th, July 21st, August 4th, August 18th, September 1st, September 15th, October 6th, October 20th, November 5th is a Thursday, November 17th, December 1st, and December 15th, and December 31st, 2015, at 9:00 AM, Thursday. Before I move this resolution, what we're trying to accomplish with this resolution is when we do have to go into a public, an executive session, not to keep the public waiting. So from now on, what we're going to try to do, what we're going to do, is we're going to start our meeting in the, in commission chambers in the back at 7:00, and we will not come out to the floor until 7:30. So if we have any executive sessions that we have to talk about among our commissioners, we can do that and not keep the public waiting. So if anybody wants to come to a commission meeting, the meetings will start at 7:30 in this room from now on. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye, thank you. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the following days shall be considered paid holidays. The 2015 schedule is as follows. Thursday, January 1st, 2015, New Year's Day. Monday, July 19th, I'm sorry, January 19th, Monday, January 19th, Martha Luther King, Jr. Day. Monday, February 16th, President's Day. Friday, April 3rd, Good Friday. Monday, May 25th, Memorial Day. Friday, July 3rd, Independence Day. Monday, September 7th, Labor Day. Monday, October 12th, Columbus Day. Tuesday, November 3rd, Election Day. Wednesday, November 11th, Veterans Day. Thursday, November 26th, Thanksgiving. Friday, November 27th, Day After Thanksgiving. Thursday, December 24th, Christmas Eve, a half a day. Friday, December 25th, Christmas Day. And Thursday, December 31st, New Year's Eve, is a half a day. And again, this is the schedule for 2015. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the following newspapers are hereby designated as the official newspapers for advertising for the Township of Nutley for the year 2015, the Nutley Sun, The Star Ledger, The Herald News. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye. Whereas impaired drivers on our nation's roads kill more than 10,000 people each year and cost our society more than $37 billion annually. And whereas 22% of motor vehicle fatalities in New Jersey in 2013 were alcohol-related. And whereas an enforcement crackdown is planned to combat impaired driving, and whereas the seizing at the end of the year is traditionally a time for social gatherings, which often include alcohol. And whereas the State and New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety has asked law enforcement agencies throughout the state to participate in the drive sober or get pulled over year-end holiday crackdown. And whereas the project will involve increased impaired driving enforcement from December 5th, 2014, through January 2nd, 2015. Whereas an increase in impaired driving enforcement and reduction in impaired driving will save lives on our roadways. Therefore, be resolved that Mayor Alphonse Petracca declares his support for the drive sober or get pulled over 2014 year-end holiday crackdown from December 5th through, 2014 through January 2nd, 2015, and pledges to increase awareness and dangers of drinking and driving. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township of Nutley shall apply for community development block grant monies for the year 2015, and whereas public hearings regarding the community development block grant program were held on November 5th, 2014, and December 1st, 2014, at which times applications for grants were accepted. Now therefore be resolved that the Township of Nutley submits the following applications for funding for 2015, in this order, number one, Conover Avenue, reconstruction and resurfacing from Union Ave. to St. Mary's Place for $159,358, and number two, Chestnut Place and Willow Place, reconstruction and resurfacing for $93,536. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye. Whereas the State of New Jersey Office of Homeland Security, which is in but not of the Department of Law and Public Safety, is administering and coordinating a federal grant award to the state for the New Jersey Broadband Technology Opportunity Program, 700 megahertz LTE broadcast project. And whereas the Township of Nutley desires to participate in the provisions of the communication services provided by the BTOP project and further the interest of domestic preparedness, and whereas OHSP and the Township of Nutley desires to further the purpose of the BTOP project by placing certain OHSP-owned equipment within the Nutley pursuant to the terms and conditions outlined in the Use and Occupancy Agreement attached hereto. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, is hereby authorized and directed to, one, execute the Use Occupancy Agreement in the name of the Township of Nutley, two, execute the Use of and Occupancy Agreement without competitive bidding in accordance with NJSA 40A:11-5 of the Local Public Contract Law, because said services are between Township of Nutley and the State of New Jersey, and is excluded from competitive bidding and advertising. And three, to file a copy of the resolution with the Chief Financial Officers of Township of Nutley and OHSP and the Division of Local Government Services and Department of Community Affairs, as required by NJSA 52:34-10.6B. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of RS 40A:4-58, the following transfers of appropriations in the 2014 budget be in, the same are hereby authorized and approved. From Zoning Board ONE 4-01-014-200, $3,000 to Zoning Board Salary and Wage 4-01-014-103,000, for a total of $3,000. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracca?
Aye. That concludes our business portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please read our five-minute rule?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone to hear this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, Mayor. Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive, Nutley, New Jersey.
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. A clarification question on Resolution 290-14. Will conference sessions that begin at 7:00 that are not declared executive sessions still be open to the public?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and then, real quick, a second one. Chapter 3 of the New Jersey Tax Assessor's Handbook states that assessors are expected to attend meetings of the governing body. To the best of your knowledge, Commissioners, what was the last meeting attended by Assessor Labreezy?
I don't, I don't recall, but we could, the next meeting, Commissioner Evans is here, we could ask him that question.
Okay. So, you don't know? I've been at most of the meetings this year and he wasn't here. Do you know if he attended any in 2013?
I don't remember.
Do any of you remember Mr. Labreezy being at a Board of Commissioners meeting?
I believe he attended one meeting.
In how many years?
I believe he attends at least one a year.
Okay.
All right, but let's check that, all right? And usually when he comes before us, he talks to us about his annual reassessment and how he's going about doing that.
Okay.
Because I know one year he came and spoke to us about how he was going to approach businesses in town, and then the following year he came to us and told us how he was going to approach the entire town.
Okay. You know, just because the State of New Jersey, in their handbook for assessors, really strongly advocates that assessors attend meetings so they can learn about the township from the governing body, so I respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners make the request to our tax assessor, Mr. Labreezy, that he start to attend meetings in 2015? Request accepted?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners? Please state your name and address for the record.
Mike Odria, 133 High Street. This is about, this is about ordinance 3301. I know you guys are not talking about it tonight, but two, two town hall meetings ago, I happened to got a list of ordinance 3301, about the salary wage increases. My question to you, sir, is this, before you vote on this ordinance, ask yourselves this Answer me this, please. Do you think that the people of Nutley, especially the property tax-paying homeowners, most likely this will affect our property taxes next year? I mean, it doesn't matter if it's BOC, BOE, or the county, because whatever you guys do, our property taxes go up. My question to you is this, before you vote on this ordinance, and most likely will raise our property taxes, do you think the families of this town can absorb another property tax increase? Yes or no?
I think that we are at our limits here, and I could attest from just paying my property taxes here, that they are, they're very difficult for me to even pay at this point. However, I think that Nutley offers a lot. I think it's a great town. I think you get a lot of services, and I think you get a good bang for your buck here.
So, basically, you're saying, yes, that we can absorb another property tax increase?
I'm saying to you that we do the best that we can. We are one agency out of three that affects the bill, the Board of Education, the Board of Commissioners, and also the county does, and I could tell you that we've done everything in our power to manage these costs, so there is a minimal raise in any of the taxes, and we do whatever we can do to provide the best services to the residents of Nutley, the best school system, the safest town, the parks, the water, I could go on and on and on. So, in order to do that, there's a cost associated with that, and like we've talked about before, we have to weigh our options. Do we want to start bringing down our education level? Do we want to not make it a safe town in order to balance our budget? And what we try to do up here, Michael, all the time, and I know I do, and I won't talk for all the Commissioners, is we try to strike a balance, try to say, okay, where can we cut, not to make it be lopsided, but we're doing the best we can, and I think that in this climate, we've been doing a pretty good job up here.
Okay, because I believe in cap and control your spending. And I do remember, I think it was March 2013, when, remember those, you know, the Nutley police were speaking to you about, you know, these, what do you call this? They wanted some promotions and all that, and one cop after another kept pounding you, saying these words, and some old guy said, you know, blah, 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 get out of this town. But there was one woman-
They were telling me to get out of town?
Well, some woman, some gentleman, some older guy. If you go back to the minutes, maybe you could find his words, but more importantly is this, I remember towards the end of the meeting, this one woman got up and she said to you, I know, I know you, and I know most of the, I'm just using these police officers as an example, because, you know, they're town employees, just the same as the guys who pick up the garbage or work in the park, I'm just using, but this one woman got up and she, she says, I drive a van for a living, and I know your children, and most of your police officers, I know your children. She said something that struck me to the core, that I've never mentioned before, but I've been reminded of it. From what I remember, she said, we should all be happy we have a job, and I think it's a blessing if you have a job that pays $52,000 a year. Because I look at some of these salaries, and we homeowners have to pay for this, and these are non-union employees. I don't know if they get a pension, I don't know if they're getting healthcare, well, probably are, I'm sure, most likely are, but what I'm trying to say is, if you're making more than 52 grand a year in the public sector, that's a blessing, because we in the private sector are really fighting to make every buck just to pay these bills, because it is a bill. So, before you vote, and we have more people move out of this town, and also, like Chris Christie said, $70 billion has moved out of New Jersey over the course of the past five years. Don't be a part of that. You can put a stop to it, you know, cap and control your spending, and just to let you know-
The five minutes? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Just to let you know, I did contact Joe DiVincenio, Essex County-
Executive.
Executive, and I told him the same thing too, because he told me, Mr. Odria, you know, I didn't raise your property taxes, the 2% cap. I raised it 1.7, and I said to him, but you still raised it in the past three years. Can't you cap and control your spending too? Okay, that's all I want to say, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners? Seeing no one?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Time is now 8:21.
You know where your children are.